Janet? Oh, we're good?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to call the two order, the City of Riverbank Planning Commission meeting, dated for today, Tuesday, March 15th of 2016, at again 6:05 PM. Janet, can we get a roll call, please?
Chair Philip Padois.
Here.
Vice Chair McKenney, Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart, and Commissioner Tabacco.
Here.
Okay. Before I proceed, I'd also like to state that I will have to leave the meeting at 6:30 on a prior engagement that I have an appointment there. So, let me give you guys a heads up. Next to the conflict of interest, any planning commissioner, authority member, and staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda, item to be considered or to be declared their conflict. Do we have any?
I can't vote on 2C because I wasn't here.
Okay. Voting on 2C. Thank you. Okay, on to item number one, public comments. There's no action to be taken here. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak during his time, this time, excuse me. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented under the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please address the entire planning commission board. Do we have any public comments? We have none. Undo, number two, item two, the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the planning commission unless otherwise requested by an individual planning commissioner, member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. On that note, we will be, on the approval of the minutes, we will move that to our next meeting, correct? Okay. So, we'll be voting on item, item 2.8, the posting of the agenda, and item 2.2, approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Items 2.8 and 2.2. Okay. You have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a vote call.
Chair Philip Padois.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tabacco.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And that'll be in the, what is it, April meeting that we have on the?
Yeah, April 19th.
19th, okay. Okay. Onto item, under the public notice, number three, we have item 3.1. We have Lee Sandoval slash proposal for parcel map 01-2016. Can we get a project description here, Donna, please?
Okay. We're looking for the clicker.
Oh, okay.
So, I will take care of that. This is a tentative parcel map application. A little too far there. Parcel map 01-2016, project description. The applicant is requesting to divide an existing parcel containing one dwelling unit into two parcels. The project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA guidelines pursuant to section 15315, Minor Land Divisions. Property is located at 6125 Roselle Avenue, APN 132-063-001, and is owned, single-family residential, R1. The general plan designation for the site is Low Density Residential, LDR. Okay. All right. So, summary, the parcel map is a request to split one 17,988 square foot parcel into two parcels. Parcel one being 9,583 square feet, or 715 square foot net. Parcel two, 8415 square feet, 6646 square foot net.
Hey, Donna, real quick, what is that, the 6646 square foot net?
Hey, I was just, oh, no. I was gonna get into that a little bit later, but I'll mention that now.
Okay.
The property, right now, the curb gutter and sidewalk is not at the ultimate location. The property will be making a dedication to the city of 25 feet to straighten off that block. Right now, that, the property kind of pops out 25 feet further than the rest of the block.
Okay.
So, that's what those net totals are.
Got it.
Okay, so here's the project location. It's at the southwest corner of Turpin Avenue and Roselle Avenue. Here's a copy of the parcel map. You can see that parcel one has an existing house on it closest to the corner, and then parcel two is right below it to the south. Here is an area view of that location. You can see the house with the driveway and the vacant property just south of it. And as you can see, oops, as you can see how the property bumps out on Roselle right there, and that's the part that will be dedicated to the city. Okay, so as far as the requirements go, both net parcels meet the minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. There will be a dedication of 25 feet of Roselle right-of-way, which would actually make the garage opening less than 20 feet from the planned right-of-way line. The Riverbank Municipal Code provides both the setback for the house, which is 15 feet, and the house, the existing house, once that dedication is developed, the setback of the house will be fine. But the code goes on to say that garage openings should be at least 20 feet from the planned right-of-way line. So, that's the only thing that does not work as far as this lot split goes. Frontage improvements will be required when the second parcel develops, or 10 years, whichever comes first. The current general plan designation is Low Density Residential, which is 1 to 8 units per net acre, and the current zoning is Low Density Residential, and neither one of those will change. The environmental pursuant to the SEQA guidelines, section 15315, Class 15 Minor Land Divisions. So, this is an urbanized area, zoned residential. It's for a few parcels. It's in conformance with the general plan and zoning. No variances or exceptions are required. All services and access available, not a part of a land division in the previous two years, and no average slope greater than 20%. As I mentioned, in conformance with the general plan and zoning, the only item it did not meet is the garage opening being less than 20 feet from the right-of-way line. I do not believe that would require a variance. This is an action requested by the city, and so that part would be considered legally non-conforming, a garage opening.
That was on the parcel that has the home on it, the dwelling on it?
Correct. When the second lot is developed, the house setback and the garage opening will meet code. But there are no plans for development right now. I pretty much told you everything about it. It's a simple lot split, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. I believe the property owner is here. I could provide answers if I can't give those to you.
Commissioners, any thoughts or questions?
No.
So, if the city violates its own ordinance, it doesn't need a variance? Is that basically what it is for the garage opening? You can decide that it's okay to build closer because you're the city and you can change the ordinance? We're the city, or however that works?
Well, it's, it wouldn't be so much changing the ordinance or waiving the ordinance, but it is a part of the setbacks. The house does meet the setback, and the setback is a legal requirement. I don't know. What do you, you have any comments on that? It's not something that normally appears in most zoning ordinances. I have a copy of it.
Could I speak a moment? I am the owner of the property.
Oh, could you give us a minute? When we open up to the public comment, we'll definitely allow you on that. Thank you.
There's an existing garage.
Yes.
Right now. So, if there's, if the, if there's an existing structure, then as Donna mentioned, it would be a non-conforming use. So, it's one thing if they're applying for a permit to build something, and you look at setbacks and things like that. So, that, I think there is a distinction when you have an existing building as opposed to...
Kind of grandfathered in.
Correct.
Could you put that slide up of the parcel on there, if you don't mind? Right there. How far in will that approximate, to the garage or to the driveway?
It'll come in 25 feet, and that'll leave a 14-foot front yard.
14-foot front yard.
And I think I mentioned 15 feet earlier, but the actual setback that's required is 10 feet for the house.
Okay.
That actually reduces the size of the front yard of the existing where the house is currently.
Correct.
Any other further questions for us, for staff? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anybody on behalf of the product can please step up and state your name and address of residency, please.
Hi, I'm Lee Sandoval. Address is 3813 Baywood Court, Modesto, California.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you guys for your time tonight, and thank Donna and Janet for helping me through the process. This is my first time of doing something like this. I've owned the property for almost 30 years, and now I'm coming to the point where I'm mature in my life, looking towards retirement. So, that's the process that I'm looking at in, in doing the split, and trying to look forward to retirement, so.
Perfect. Thank you for that comment. Any other comments from the public? Two or four? No? Okay. At this time, we'd like to close the public hearing and bring right back to the planning commission here. Any further questions on this approval?
I don't have any.
No. I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
That we approve item 3.1, Lee Sandoval, proposal for parcel map 01-2016.
Second that motion.
Can we get a roll call, please, for the vote?
Chair Philip Padois.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tabacco.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Onto item 3.2. We have the Mark Wilber slash Diamond Bar West proposal for architectural and site plan review, application number 01-2016. Donna, could you give us a little project description, please?
Yes. This is the architecture and site plan review of single dwelling, excuse me, single-family dwelling units for 58 lots in the Diamond Bar West subdivision. The proposed architecture and site plan review is subject to approval by the planning commission pursuant to section 153095G of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances. Okay. And it is located at Santa Fe Street and Central Avenue on the southwest corner. The project has already received these current approvals, a general plan amendment 201401, where it went from medium-density residential to low-density residential. It received a zoning ordinance amendment number 201401, where it went from R2 to PD, tentative map number 201401, and an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was approved. Here's a photo, or a drawing of the vesting tentative map. As you can see, there's three streets within the subdivision, as well as two cul-de-sacs. And the developer has been working to modify those cul-de-sacs to ensure that they meet fire department regulations. Here's an outline of the property, so you can get a visual for the next slide, which is the aerial view. So, as you can see, there is scattering of residential houses around this subdivision. I'm gonna go ahead and run you through these elevations. Mr. Wilber is providing four houses and eight different color combinations. I'm gonna show you three of each of the floor plans, and I thought you might want to notice what the roof looks like and how it changes between these elevations. So, here's A, and then B, and C of the first floor plan. Here we have A, B, and C of the second floor plan. And as you can see, besides the changes in the roofing, some of the models have rock, some have brick, and then there's some wooden shingles on there to give variety, as well as different architectural details, too, to ensure that none of the houses look the same. Here again, we have an A, the B, and the C. And then finally, these are the last three. Okay. Now, I have revised the resolution that was in your packets. In reading the standard conditions of approval, there was some discussion on the homeowners' association, which I carried over to the resolution. But these are going to be public streets and not private streets, so a homeowners' association is not required. The maintenance of any fencing, some walls, graffiti removal, enforcement of the cul-de-sac parking can be addressed in the CCNRs. And what I mean by the cul-de-sac parking is, as I mentioned before, they're working with the fire department to change the shape of the cul-de-sacs, because some of the biggest fire equipment they have may have a little bit of difficulty in the cul-de-sac. We have worked with the developer to ensure that there will be rolled curbs. There's only the two cul-de-sacs. There'll be rolled curbs painted red, so there will be no parking in the cul-de-sac itself. The street leading up to it can have parking, but not the actual turn of the cul-de-sac itself. All landscaping, signage, hydrants, lights will be placed outside of that radius where the sidewalks are. It'll be a foot or two behind back a sidewalk, and that area will be kept clear, just to make sure that that fire equipment can make its full turn. And so, there will be a disclosure added to the, or for the property owners that buy in that cul-de-sac. They will be aware of all these requirements before they purchase. The architecture and site plan review of dwelling units for an approved tentative subdivision map is not a project pursuant to California SEQA guidelines. The environmental was already done on the map.
2014, and that happened?
2014 is when they applied. It happened in early 2015 that the approvals were reached. So, the recommendation tonight is to approve the architecture and site plan review for Diamond Bar West for 58 single-family dwellings. As I mentioned, it's four floor plans and eight color combinations. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that, plus the developer is available as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
I tried to make it as quickly as possible, knowing that you're leaving at 6:30 and...
Yes. I got a question. I think you mentioned there's no parking in the cul-de-sacs?
In the cul-de-sac itself.
Basically, one will be parking in their established driveway or garage, correct?
Correct. They have the two parking spaces in the garage and two parking spaces on the driveway.
What does it mean to mitigate a negative declaration?
It means that there are certain conditions that could be a problem environmentally, and so when you propose a solution before the document is adopted, then you, the condition is considered mitigated. It's been taken care of, and it doesn't have to be, you know, followed up on as far as, you know, how are we gonna fix this?
That referring to the Feruginous Hawk?
It refers to the hawk. There were some oak tree issues with the property. What else was there? There was several conditions within the environmental document itself that staff has been working with the developer to ensure that they were mitigated before the final map process.
If there are, if there's no homeowners' association, who enforces the CCNRs?
Well, they're enforced by the homeowners themselves or the city. The disclosures give them full notice, so if they do park in the cul-de-sac, they are, they would be possibly towed.
As far as, like, say, common fences and those kind of things, they just deal with it amongst themselves?
Correct. Individual property owners. If you have a fence you share with a neighbor, the fence comes down, you work on it together, which is normal in most subdivisions.
This is my second meeting, so I'm not sure what's been approved prior to tonight, but I just have a couple of things that I'd like to bring up. First of all, I'd like to say, single-story with covered patios, I think, is great, especially, you know, they're saying we have to age in place, like they say. And the smaller sizes of the house, they aren't huge McMansions like they used to say. One of the things, and maybe not for this one, but maybe something that could be considered in the future, is they talk about the porches, and the porches provide eyes on the street. I live in Crossroads, and I have one of the single-story with the small entryway that's covered. And when I looked up definition of porches, it said that is a porch. But I don't stand out there a lot at night or during the day, you know. It doesn't bring me out. But the people with the larger ones, like your one plan has, I think it's 130-foot porch, people do come out to that. They put chairs out there, and that brings people out to the front. So, maybe in the future, I'm not saying this one we need to, but in the future, to look at larger porches. And I do like the covered patios. I had to put one in myself one, after I bought the house. One question I have is, you mentioned that there's green areas in between the two sites, there's green areas. And in the staff report, item eight, it said that the basin in the northeast corner is not a dual-use park. It's gonna have a fence around it. So, it's not one that can be used as a park. It's only for water. The one on the, on east, we'll talk when that comes due. But, so what are the green spaces for this side? I didn't see any.
The green space, well, most of the, mostly the green spaces will be the family's yard, and they will, they're the ones who will need to care for those yards. There may be some along the street, there may be some, well, there'll be landscaping in front of the basin, and those will be covered by our, this project is required to go into a CFD, a Community Facilities District. So, there will be a yearly assessment on these houses, and that money goes to taking care of streets, landscaping, lighting, citywide. So, it mitigates the impact of this neighborhood on the city services.
So, the people that live in this, that buy houses and live there will have to travel to go to a park? Is there one close by, or do they have to travel quite a bit?
They would need to travel, what would be the closest one?
Castleburg?
Castleburg would be the closest.
Okay. Just, I was just curious, because usually we try and get parks or pay in lieu of doing parks.
Right. And this has, this project has an obligation for that.
Oh, it does? Okay. Skip that. One thing, and again, not for tonight probably, but whenever they put stoops at the back door, they say they're gonna put stoops at the back door, or the side door to the garage. The problem is, is if you don't put a sidewalk that goes back to that stoop, the people that buy the houses don't wanna take their garbage cans behind. It happened in our development, and people left their garbage cans out front. When they do put in a walkway in an area behind the fence, then they move them back there, you know, but they're out front for a while. So, maybe...
Sure. Staff will look at that in the future.
That's it.
We do have an ordinance to enforce that.
Okay. Any further questions?
I just had one about the streets. I don't, I'm not sure if it's in something we consider or not being new, but is there, those streets are pretty small, and this is gonna be 58 lots? Are, is there, are those streets gonna be able to handle the amount of additional traffic from this additional housing in that neighborhood?
Yes. The developer is putting in off-site improvements. They will be doing half the section of the street that adjoins their property, and then doing an overlay on the other portion of the street. In fact, on the Santa Fe portion, they will be addressing some drainage issues. We've had a lot of standing water on Santa Fe and Claus, and their project will help us dissipate that water. They are also, there's a 300-year-old oak tree at the corner of Santa Fe and Central, and we are working with their engineers to bump out those corners to save that tree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I know I'm on that timeline, and...
So, if he has to leave, do we have to continue this?
Well, if, I mean, we can open the public hearing, but before there's any deliberation, it would have to get continued, so if people wanna make, if it's the commission's, you know, desire to open the public hearing now, it can be opened, or it could be continued. It's kind of at the pleasure of the commission at this point. But clearly, no, no action can be taken if there's no quarter.
Okay. So, you could take public comments?
Yeah, I'm thinking, open up the public hearing.
Yes. And that way, if people come here and they can't come next time, then they can have their comments.
Correct. Have their comments today.
Right now.
Okay. But I will excuse myself, and sorry about that. Okay? Thank you. But at this time, we'd like to open up the public hearing on behalf of the project, for or against. Thank you.
And which commissioner should take over? Oh, we drew straws.
I believe it was Commissioner King.
Mr. King got the longer straw.
So, where are we on this?
No, we just opened up to the public hearing. It's up to the public hearing, they're gonna come in and speak, and then we'll close the public hearing thereafter.
Okay. Could you state your, your name and address for us?
Dolene Anderson, 4236 Santa Fe Street. We live on the corner of Santa Fe and Central. And I was just curious with the housing development, where the septic is going to be going? Where's the sewage treatment area for this housing development gonna be? Right now, there are no sewer lines in Santa Fe Street, and I was wondering if they do develop this and have sewer treatment, are we gonna be required to hook up to it? We have a septic system right now. That's one question.
Are you, you want the answer, or are you gonna ask your second question first?
Well, that's one question. I was also curious about how the sidewalks and everything are going to impinge on our area. I mean, we're losing land on two sides of our corner property, and they're putting sidewalks in. And I think a stop sign at the corner is going in, and we're gonna have a lot of noisy cars and smelly cars and traffic backed up in front of the house. So, it puts us in a way where we're having to redesign our house for, I don't know, for resale in the future and stuff, so that it's not, just kinda, I would like to have sidewalk appeal. We're losing our circular driveway, and right now, it's very hard to get in and out of our house with the traffic we have now during the school year. And I won't have that circular drive anymore. The engineer said that we can't have two openings anymore on the Santa Fe side of our street, which means I have to back out into traffic at a stop sign. So, it's gonna be, it's, we're, I'm not happy with the way the traffic flow's gonna be, and it's very hard to turn off Santa Fe onto Claus Street in the morning. You really have to plan what time you're gonna do it, and now we're gonna have more excessive traffic in the area. So, these are just concerns I have about... So these are just concerns I have about this particular thing. Also, I was curious with water restrictions in Riverbank. We're supposed to be hand-watering everything. Will these houses come with sprinklers in the ground or, or are they being left out of the plans? Because they say we're not supposed to use sprinklers.
Okay. So most of your questions were answered and actually approved at the tentative map phase. All we're really looking at right now is the architecture of the homes. But I can tell you that originally, they wanted to put the sewers in Santa Fe and were unable to because of PG&E gas lines. So sewers will be in the extension of Sierra instead. And you will not, you're not part of this project, so you're not required to hook up to city sewer at this time. And it's my understanding that you don't have to pay for these sidewalks that the developer is putting in for you. And if you would like to come to City Hall and talk to us about possibly a T-shaped driveway that would help you get turned around, I'd be willing to sit down and help you with that.
And your name is?
I'm Donna, the Planning and Building Manager.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other further public comment?
Hi. Gwen Napp, Central Avenue. I also have the same concern as our neighbors down the road. We also are on septic and we also have a well. So the property is surrounding us. Will we also, because we're not part of the project?
Correct. Until you do a project in the city, you're not required to change what you have right now.
Okay.
You're not part of their project.
So our septic and well will be fine?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Last name is Napp, G-N-A-P-P. First name Gwen. Thanks.
Good evening. Mark Wilber, I just wanted to introduce myself. It looks like we're going to be meeting again here in April. So I'm pleased, I think, that it sounds like the reaction to your plans is favorable. I wish I could claim more credit, but Dave Stark, our engineer, or, excuse me, our architects, actually, pretty much the brains behind it. But just to, you know, we want to do a good job. We hope to be good neighbors. I've been in the business for about 33 years. We did do a project in Riverbank years ago. I think it was, gosh, like 1990, about 100 units off of Townsend and I've developed roughly 4,000-plus homes and lots in the Central Valley and coastal area. So I want this to be a success. I mean, it doesn't do us any good if it's not an attractive product. So trying to put something in, as, as you pointed out, single-story, I mean, for a lot of reasons, is a more marketable product in today's world. And I think it, you know, again, it's our goal to try to make sure that it's an asset for us economically as well as for the community. So thank you for your time and we will see you next month, it sounds like.
Any further public comment?
I'm Jerry Anderson. I live on a corner of Santa Fe and Central. What is the legal setback in the City of Riverbank? How far off city property or do I have to be?
Well, for most R1 zoning district homes, it's 10 feet. Some of these subdivisions are PDs, which are planned development, and so that can be adjusted by, between the developer and the city.
Okay. So if we're losing our, basically losing the front of our house and you're going to work on a T-driveway, who's responsible to pay for that T-driveway? We are?
Yes.
Oh, great. So we're losing property and I got to pay to have my own driveway done because the city's taking it because of new houses, correct? Is that basically what you're telling me?
Well, no. The city rideaway was already there. You just may have thought that the city rideaway was your property line, but your property line was in more, closer to the house than, than the rideaway.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll close the public comment portion and move on to, since we can't make a recommendation without a quorum, item four? Yep. So Planning Commission Information Only Non-Auction Items, item 4.1.
Yeah. I'd recommend, I'd recommend stating that this, this item will be continued to the, to the next Planning Commission meeting in April, at which point...
Can we put it on consent? Or no?
When we'll, we'll look into whether or not this item can be put on the consent. But, but for now, just continue the item to the next meeting.
Okay. For the record then, item 3.2, Mark Wilber slash Diamond Bar West Proposal for Architectural and Site Plan Review, Application Number 01-216, will be continued to the next meeting in April?
19th.
19th. And you'll look into whether it can be put on the consent calendar or not. Ready? So now moving on to item four, Planning Commission Information Only Non-Action Items, item 4.1, going to update on the, an update on the Planning Commission Academy held March 4th through the 6th, 2016. Did you want to make some comments about that, Donna?
Sure. There were four planning commissioners and myself that went to the League of California Cities. Is that the one we're talking about? Yes. Planning Commissioner Academy. It was held March 4th through 6th and there were many good sessions that we sat in on. And I met with the, I came up to the podium at the last city council meeting and then on behalf of staff and the planning commissioners, I thanked the city council for that opportunity for all of us to go there and, and have that learning experience.
Yes. I, I attended that as well and it was very worthwhile. Did anyone else have any comments they wanted to make about that?
Yes. I'd like to say it's changed because when I was on the, put on the committee about 10 years ago, the only training they had all year was a half a day. And so it's nice to have some full training.
Well, I'll, staff will continue to keep our eyes open for opportunities for training as well as working with our attorney's office and providing you with any necessary training that comes up.
Thank you. So item four, county referrals slash correspondence information. There was none. So we'll take it to the six upcoming meeting agenda items. Item 6.1, Diamond Bar West Final Subdivision Map. Applicants are working on the plans for utilities and streets towards a grading permit. Item 6.2, RFP Process and Comprehensive Zoning Code Update, including the sign ordinance. That's information only there. And item seven, 7.1, New Business. Crossroads Shopping Center Pad C Update. Panda Express is now open. Chipotle is open. Dicky's Barbecue Pit is open. AT&amp;T Store is open and Five Guys will open in March. Item 7.2, Crossroads Shopping Center Pad G Update. Next to Bevmo, Americas Tire Plans in Review. Item eight, Adjournment. So at this, at this time, shall we adjourn?
Do we make a motion or do we just adjourn? Just okay.
The chair, appointed chair, can adjourn.
I'm doing, okay.
You are adjourned. I don't know what time it is.
6:43.
At 6:43.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Way to go for your first...